Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. It is June 26th and we are calling this meeting a board. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 12th, 2018 regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, amendments, corrections? All those in favor? Okay, we have six in favor and one abstention. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 20th, 2018 special meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any questions, amendments, corrections? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment if any member of the public wishes to come forward and address the board, we welcome it. Or not. There'll be another opportunity for public comment. Alright, so we're going to move into the reports and discussions segment of our meeting and we are going to take the liberty of moving item 4.5 up, the Dutchess County Voces Capital Project presentation from our two colleagues, so I will invite you to come up and introduce yourself.
And you can speak from there, so whatever you say will be recorded.
I'm not going to introduce myself. I'm Sherri Wesley, Assistant Superintendent for Business Services at Dutchess Voces. And my colleague is Jason Schwartz, who is with Bernie P. Duncan, Municipal Finance, and they are consultants on the project. So I'm actually going to start by asking Whitney if there's a...
Is there a clicker?
Oh, clicker.
There were over there last night.
I know, but I don't know, I don't play ballgames.
You could do a napkin.
Let's just bring all of them. Could it like also advance? No?
I think that's a TV again.
That's just a TV?
That's a TV.
What's this one guys?
I think that.
That might be it?
Try.
Twenty-first century learners, we're just...
Lifelong learners.
I have a feeling it.
Oh, it does seem to be doing stuff though.
Can you start the slideshow?
Oh, no. Oh, Whitney's doing it.
From the beginning?
Some of that was manually done. I've got my fingers crossed.
That was just from over there?
Yeah.
Maybe I can just advance it.
Of course.
I can look at it there. Really? Alright, alright, thank you. Alright, at the end?
Thank you, several things. Thank you for adjusting the agenda and thank you for accommodating as we get started. So we're here to give you a very... Talk about two parts of a potential Dutchess Voces capital project. The first is to give you a bit of a flavor of what the project itself is, but I also need to let you know that the details of the project will be forthcoming. Perhaps a couple of weeks later, details of the project. What we are very much concerned with now is the financing of the project. So we'll be spending quite a bit of time talking about an intermunicipal agreement and some pros and cons of how the project might be financed. So it is a project that we think will improve the education of our students as well as make economic sense. And what the project would do is renovate our Career Technical Center on the Salt Point campus and build a new addition on that campus that would house the Alternative High School. If you're familiar with Dutchess Voces, most of our facilities are on the Salt Point campus, which is a large property to be on, but we do rent a facility on Route 34 here at Alton on reference point that houses our Alternative High School and also some back office things in Communications and something called the RSC test. So the project would move everything on one campus. If approved, it would be approximately a $36.8 million project. And Dutchess Voces itself is 60 years old. We haven't, we don't have any record of anything for at least 50 years and most of us think this is the first, but definitely not for 50 years. So it's not something that we do often or take lightly. So, you know, kind of what's driving it? What's driving it is the fact that our facilities aren't adequate, that we really do need to be more concerned with some of the safety issues particularly at the Alternative High School. That we've been renting the facility for 28 years, which, you know, for on the business side of the world, it just doesn't make sense to continue to pay rent to someone else for 28 years.
Got owned it outright.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, even though there is some associated expense, we will eventually own a building and stop paying rent. And you can, we have some pictures kind of interspersed. A student eating at her desk because we don't have adequate cafeteria space. This is one of our small engine rooms and the trades are actually doing very well in terms of enrollment, but because we are in 40, 50-year-old lab space, we're kind of constricted in our ability to adapt. Most of the newer trade spaces separate the lab and lecture, so your lecture space can be for any of the trades, any of the work, and then go to a separate place when you're working on small engine or auto body or whatever the specific trade is. So by reconfiguring those kinds of things, it cuts down on the downtime, it gives you more flexibility and use the space more usable more often. So those are some of the kinds of things we're looking for as we go into new space. This is the current Alternative High School building. It is in an industrial park, which means there are warehouses, which means there are trucks, which means on Sunday afternoon, there is a flea market that we get to clean up for every Monday morning. It means that for some of the students, the athletic track is around parking lot. So it really is not where any of us want to be educating our children. So we also know that there are some educational benefits. It would give us the opportunity, for example, to develop some of the sensory programs that our special education folks have been talking about a lot and prevent some of the placements that we now have to send students out for. Gives our high school students, we have high school students at both CTI, the Career Technical and Alternative High School, the opportunity to do some cross-pollinating, the opportunity for the teachers to do some collaborative planning and growing, the opportunity for us to use some of those people and places much more flexibly. And finally, not finally, but also we like to remind people, ALAS stands for Adult Learning Institute. Now, we do have adults who use the Career Technical building in the evenings. So any investments we're able to do in the Career and Technical Institute benefit our adult students who come in tuition pay in the evenings and really take courses so that they can improve their employability, increase their job skills, really, you know, increase their role in the marketplace. So those kind of things, it'll be one single self-contained, easy access, easier to control. Our Career Technical Institute is technically ADA accessible, but is by no means easily accessible. You have to go outside and come back in and do some really strange maneuvers. So we won't be able to make it perfect, but we can definitely improve it a lot in this An example of a welding station that hasn't been improved in many years and sinks and our facilities department always wants to make sure that people realize they've taken as good a care as possible, but we have a sink that's 50 years old and it's been used by hundreds of them, students. It's one of the big replacements, one of the new wear, it's one of the shoe wear. So there's programmatic benefits, there are also, I think, a number of real fiscal reasons why this project makes sense. Lease costs always go up, they never go down. We're not at historically low interest rates anymore, but for those of us of a certain age, we're still relatively low in terms of, you know, when some of us started buying houses and taking loans. So it's still a relatively good interest rate time. We have some districts that send buses to the Alternative High School and to the Career Technical Institute. A project like this eliminates that duplication. It also eliminates, we transport some students from the Alternative High School to part of the day at the Career Technical. That's another thing that just immediately disappears. And we're working on pulling together the whole list of cost savings, but for example, we know that there's going to be some pretty significant IT savings just by not having to wire a whole other facility. So we are putting together that list and we'll be back and share that with you in the fall, but we believe it makes sense. And just finally, we have what used to be called GED is now High School Equivalency Program. We have one at both of our high schools. That's a real easy way of, you know, combining and eliminating duplication. So the project itself makes a lot of sense to us, hopefully to you, in terms of the educational ramifications and also the fiscal side of it. We will be holding a public vote of what's called the Dutchess Voces catchment area, which is essentially Dutchess County residents, but there are a few people who live in Columbia County that go to Pine Plains Schools and there are a few people who live in Kent, in Platte County that go to Lockinger Schools. So those people are why we have to use the word catchment area. But it'll be a public vote December 11th, 2018, and the public will decide whether or not the project goes forward. Boards of Education have a say in how the project is funded and we very much are hoping and we're going around to all 13 components in the county, asking that they approve an intermunicipal agreement. And that's an agreement between Dutchess County and all 13 components. And if approved, will allow each district to determine how they choose to finance their portion of overall project. It would make it possible to do a project with lower interest rates, fewer fees than would be the case with the Alternative. And again, would give you flexibility in terms of how, what might make more sense for you. In order to move forward, we are asking all of the boards to vote during July, hopefully vote in affirmative to support the idea of the intermunicipal agreement so that we can then go forward and determine the actual cost of the project. If all of the 13 components agree to the intermunicipal agreement, the cost is $36.8 million. If for some reason the public approves the projects, but we were not able to get the intermunicipal agreement, then our only financing choice is through the Dormitory Authority, we may have heard of it, DASNE. And if we do need to go the DASNE route, it adds $1.74 million to the project and it also takes away the ability for the 13 districts to act independently in terms of how it's financed. So, you know, I think it makes sense and hopefully after you've had a chance to kind of think about it a little bit more, you will also agree that it seems to be a sensible way to go. And as you're seeing, column D is the share with the intermunicipal agreement. And we highlight it, what Rhinebeck's share would be, which you can probably see better than I. And if you follow it over, you'll also see F if we have to do the DASNE route. So it does make sense for every district and the entire project. And just for comparison purposes, we did a slide of what it looked like for a large district and a smaller district if we did the intermunicipal agreement. And then to all fairness specifically about Rhinebeck, if we are able to get the unanimous intermunicipal agreement, your share would be $986,000 and if not, it goes up about $46,000. So that would be country specific to you. So at this point, I turn things over to Jason, who will talk a little bit more about some of the specific financing options that we might have.
Evening, everyone. Just had a little kind of supplemental presentation we had, so this is specifically kind of high level of example of what we're talking about when we say, you know, having flexibility in terms of financing options. So on the front page here, we just real quick, just to kind of show you how we're getting to those numbers, Sherri mentioned a little while ago in terms of, you know, what is Rhinebeck's share of this project. So you can see in the yellow column, column D, that's the total project cost of the $36.8 million, assuming that all 13 components sign the IMA, otherwise, as Sherri mentioned, that'd be a little bit higher if we go on the DASNE route. But assuming the $36.8 million, if everybody signs the IMA, you see, we basically break that down across the 13 components. And the way that's done is by taking the arwata, the Resident Weighted Average Daily Attendance, so basically trying to determine, you know, how many students are in each district and kind of allocated a pro-rata share based on that. So you can see, we highlighted Rhinebeck right there, you see, you're 2.68% of the overall Voces arwata, so that means out of the $36.8 million, you get about $986,000 is the share for you guys as a district. So how does that get paid out? If you flip through the intermunicipal agreement, it lays out in there, but essentially, you know, based on a cash flow that's provided from the architect, there'll be three payments over the three years from the district to the Voces. Right now, it's planned for about July 15th of 2019, 2020, 2021. So that kind of finances the project from the Voces end. And then the question is, how does that ultimately filter back to you as a district? So if you go, if anybody doesn't sign the IMA of any individual district and you have to go the DASNE route, then essentially the Voces will finance and then that service gets what we give back to you for your share then. If you go the IMA route, you can really finance that any way you want. And just to kind of illustrate that, we brought kind of three sample examples tonight. So on page two, you can see, just kind of graphically, we show here would be an option where you would pay cash. So you pay cash in all three years, which is what the flags are. And just kind of illustrate, just kind of illustrate what that looks like in terms of the pro-rata share. On the next page, page three, you see in that first column, we're showing the cash payments and since you're paying cash, there'd be no associated debt service, obviously you're just paying whatever your share is on each of those years. You know, one thing you will notice on here is unfortunate, you don't get any payback on this project as a district because of the, your arwata, the ratio is 0% and that's what it's based on, it's not your normal capital projects ratio. So unfortunately, that's not on here, but that's kind of just a factor of how that is calculated on the Voces project. So in this scenario, you'd have all cash, would be option one. Option two would be if you have to bond and try to pay all cash, still pay it off in three years, but you needed maybe some financing to kind of ditch it through the year in terms of the cash flow until you get to the end of your fiscal year, so you can kind of collect the tax money and keep it for most of the year. So that would be an option where you could, you know, essentially issue a ban each year as that payment comes due and then pay it off at the end of the year. So again, that would be pretty similar to the scenario where you're paying all cash, except for you had a little bit of an interest payment there in column C, so that takes that local share up about, you know, 10,000 to 15,000 a year with some nest of interest in there. Then the third scenario would be if you really want to kind of spread this out, so instead of having this paid all over three years, you could go and bond it for 10, 15, 20 years, whatever works for you as a district, which obviously helps smooth the annual impact of it. So instead of having it be, you know, 100,000, then 500, then 400, you kind of smoothed that out over the last over 20 years, is the example we brought tonight. So on that last schedule, you can see the principal payment of the 986 coming back over 20 years with interest on it. So you'd see that now in the far right hand column, the pro-rata share is, you're right about 70,000 a year, so it's a much smoother impact annually and it's also a lower amount annually, but obviously it'll be more in total debt service if you're now paying interest on that over 20 years. So again, these are just some examples to give you an idea, give you a feel for some options you have, but you can only have these options if all the boards selected, signed the IMA, otherwise if you go the other route, then it would be whatever the schedule is for the Voces does, it's impacted the district. So if you want to have the options of one year, five years, 20 years, that's what the IMA probably costs. Any questions on the financing pieces?
Do you have a sense of what it might look like for if the second option, if the IMA wasn't signed, how that might...
How the financing would work?
Right.
If you're most similar to the third option in there, it's valued to be a 15- or 20-year bond that the Voces will likely do. And it's going to be higher than that third option because first of all, the cost of the costs are 1.7 million higher because the cost of issuance, it goes through the norm, so that's built in. And then the dorm, you're also going to have a higher interest, the dorm is a senior revenue bond. So even though it's backed by the other line districts, so it's generally speaking relatively safe, as far as revenue bonds go, it is still a little bit higher on the interest rate for being a revenue bond versus a general obligation bond. So between the higher interest cost and the higher cost of issuance, the product cost of, you know, so it's going to be at 70,000 a year maybe a lot higher. But you would, it would be something very similar to that third schedule in terms of what people would like, you wouldn't have something where it would be payback in a year, three years, if you wanted that option.
A question for you. I think there was some legislation passed at the end of this last session about avoidance of this from the tax cap. Is that correct or would this be sheltered by the tax cap? Because if it's not, then it makes it even more difficult. But I thought legislation was passed, but I'm not sure.
Right, I think we get into that a little later.
Yeah, I'm trying to catch the slide.
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't mean to get ahead.
Well, it's not going to be a very satisfying answer, but I'll at least...
Okay, sorry, I thought there was some light at the end of the road.
There is some legislation that's been passed, but it hasn't been, it hasn't actually been enacted with the power to go through the tax, but that's just hasn't been done yet. So it's hopeful that it could have, but it's not a big school of tax cap right now.
So that's, that's pretty much, but you know, to get through both houses in terms of the legislative side, I'm not as overjoyed because the governor vetoed it last year.
You're not counting your chickens.
Yeah, so, but you know, we are always hopeful and we got nothing to do too. I just wanted to wrap up with a couple of things. And one of them was the question about the tax cap because people ask and I wish I could give you a definitive answer, but at this point, I really can't. The other thing is to just some of the details of the vote, we are looking and I went past it and I couldn't get that. But December 11th, from noon to 8:00 PM for the vote, it will be one district with 14 polling places. So if you really want to think about the whole Dutchess County catchment area is one district and we will have a polling place in each of the 13 component school districts and a polling place at Dutchess Voces. What that means for you is if you live in Rhinebeck but work in Millbrook, you can vote Millbrook or Rhinebeck.
Oh, you can vote anywhere.
But you can vote here, it'll be possible.
Or you can vote here, but it means you can vote anywhere within the Dutchess Voces catchment area. Oh, great, then you found it. And it is an election of qualified as opposed to registered voters. So you will be qualified if you have lived in the Dutchess Voces catchment area for 30 days, if you are over 18. So you don't have to be registered, which also makes it more convenient. It will be an old-fashioned paper ballot and we'll need to provide your name and address and sign you, but we're kind of doing it as inexpensively as possible. And yes, it is a Voces expense, we have had people ask, if we want to push out the cost of the election, we'll do that. So those are kind of the details of what the election will look like. We're working on the intermunicipal agreement now. In the fall, we'll be doing many more public information sessions about what the actual project will look like and more details of, you know, the content of the project, but hopefully you get enough to get a book of flavor and to go forward with the IMA. And we always like to remind boards of education that anybody, any student that goes to Dutchess Voces is enrolled somewhere else, so your students, our students are really your students. They really are your students and we believe that you would want your students to have access to appropriate learning environment and we hope that it makes sense for you to support this project. When the support time comes, right now, we hope you support the intermunicipal agreement as the way to go forward. So with that, I will volunteer either Jason or myself for other questions.
Question, you wanted the Board of Ed to vote in July on the project?
On the intermunicipal.
Just on the intermunicipal?
Yes.
What information do you think we'll have with respect to some of the numbers that you suggested on cost savings and special education?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of the sentence.
You mentioned a lot of cost savings and improvements, but the details are light. So will we have some of that preliminary information that we can use to make a decision by July or is it really just going to be on how we'd like to fund it?
Yeah, how you would like to fund it. And, you know, in all honesty, the cost will be determined by how it's, how to fund it. So some of those things are kind of a bit of a chicken egg.
Essentially, just as a kind of high level review on that, the IMA really, you as a local Board of Education are really just approving whether, you know, what financing option is regardless of whether all the boards determine to sign the IMA or don't, it's going to require a public vote, so it's going to take up the project this order now.
And I should say, you know, we hope you will endorse the project, but supporting the IMA does not imply that you endorse the project.
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at it differently and maybe it will help you guys, maybe it will just confuse the issue, but we have no control over whether the bond proposition passes or not. That's going to be up to the people in the Dutchess Voces catchment area who vote. And if the majority, and I assume it's just a simple majority, if the majority vote to approve the project, then it's approved, unlike when our board votes on the Voces administrative budget every year. We're not voting on that. So that's essentially out of our hands as a Board of Education. The only decision that this board has is if the voter, the voting public approves the referendum, then we're only voting on how we would want to fund it. And essentially, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, out of the 13 districts, if a single district votes no to go through the Dormitory Authority, I don't know why they would, but if just one voted no, then that's how everybody's got to go.
Correct. All 13 have to support the intermunicipal agreement.
Yes, can you play devil's advocate? Is there any downside to the intermunicipal agreement?
No.
Okay.
And we actually, I say that easily because we've thought about it.
I mean, essentially, what it boils down to is the...
Everybody's individual reach.
Less costly, that's the option, and provide your dormitory flexibility on the college versus...
What would, can you tell us any reason a district would want to go with DASNE? Like, is there something made available through that option that isn't available otherwise?
I think what it usually boils down to is it's not necessarily that they want to go to DASNE, it's that they don't want to imply support maybe in the project.
Ah, yeah, okay.
It would be more of a political...
Like a political gesture?
...than it's actually wanting to go to DASNE, but it's like, there's no true path. And I suppose if a district has very bad credit rating or something like that and they thought that going to DASNE would be better than trying to do their own bond, I would assume, I don't know, I can't assume all 13 districts in this Voces set would be crediting, so that would be an issue right on here.
I don't know, I couldn't speak for all the districts, but I think one of the things to keep in mind is there'll be 13 separate school districts to go out and get borrowing. We might get it at four, Red Hook might get it at 3.9 and Millbrook, everybody's going to get a different rate based on their credit ratings and things of that nature. If we do DASNE, I believe it's just, it's one rate for everybody. So really, the only way...
Be at a higher rate.
But more than likely be at a higher rate. So really, that's the thing, is the DASNE rate... So really, that's the thing, is the DASNE rate, 4.5, and we're going to get a four. That's really, that's where the savings is for us. And that's where the savings is for all districts in that way. Am I correctly explaining it that way? Okay.
And also then, although it might seem to imply support for a yes vote, it doesn't. It just simply, it simply just allows for a certain flexibility in the financing options.
It's the fiscally prudent way to address this, if it is a successful vote.
Okay. So, you know, regardless of how we would decide to vote for the financing part of it, and I know you say there's going to be details forthcoming about the project. Do you, I mean, I'm sure there's been a lot of numbers calculated already, but, I mean, do you have any idea what the actual cost saving is of building new construction versus renting the facility you already have? I mean, I completely understand that a new facility is much better than what you have now, but we have to sell it somehow.
I can tell you that right now, we spend about seven hundred thousand a year on it. I can tell you that we could still need to rent it for probably about four years while we're constructing and going through the process. That's the only one that, you know, I'm getting energy figures, and we have somebody working on that, and we're working on the transportation of the IT, but I'm not comfortable saying them just yet.
Just to give you an idea, we're about 3% of the thing, and if it's $700,000, so we're probably 20, the low $20,000 savings there. I know transportation will be better because I know from this year, I could cut one route out, so we would be able to save on a bus route. So, you know, there are definitely savings we're going to see, but each school district will be different. Each school district will definitely be different.
I have a question. Do you know roughly how many students are served by the alternative high school?
Um, I believe it's around 130, but I do have that.
You know, that's the number I was going to say.
Is that a hundred and thirty?
That's the number I was going to say, it was 130. That's some number I've heard recently.
Yeah, I think that's somewhere too.
Probably the same meeting I heard about.
While I flip through the pieces of paper.
So that's four grades, and I'm assuming those numbers probably, the enrollment numbers there.
I'm sorry?
I'm assuming those enrollment numbers may have been impacted just the way all enrollment numbers are being impacted in Dutchess County. Or are they pretty stable?
They actually have been, the alternative high school have been pretty stable, like, there was a little dip a few years ago. And actually, the CTI is on an upswing, which is surprising a lot. I have the district totals.
Not at all.
So you do not have too many students?
No, we don't, not this year.
It's the parish community.
Yeah, we sometimes might have three or four in the alternative high school. I think this year, we have, we ended, I think, just with one there.
I think it is one on six.
And I know that person's going back there next year too.
Okay.
So is there a set date on when we have to vote on this, or is it just in July?
In July. We're dating, at this point, the joint agreement, we're dating August 1st.
So if were we to vote at our second meeting, which is July 31st, it would be the night before you have to...
Yeah, it's still possible.
But, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not, I'm not hearing that, that you're going to be able to have the kinds of numbers in terms of savings that Mark was asking about by July 31st any more than you'd have them by July 10th.
Correct. We'll probably have a little bit more than we have now by July 10th, but we won't have the detail that we'll have, you know, in September.
Right, and the reason it's being done that way in terms of timing is because, you know, with the publication requirements leading up to a vote, you know, the BOSI's has to put, you know, decide what the dollar amount that's going to go in the quarter proposition is for five to forty-nine days before the vote, so that that proposition can be perfected on. So they really need to know ahead of that, is it the IMA route, or is it the DASNE route? So they know which of those project costs are going in there. So that's why all these decisions have to be made upfront ahead of time, and then as we get closer to vote, the BOSI's, we're going to have more of that information available in the public and for the boards and the rest of the board.
Mark?
So I'd just like to express my, the fact I'm a little bit unhappy that there's really not been a lot of information about this project put out before we're being asked to decide how to finance it. It seems like, you know, voting for the intermunicipal agreement is the practical way to go for us, but there's really no information about the project. So we have to still sell this to our voters, and it's going to come out from under our tax, we don't know if it's going to be included in the tax cap or not. So it's really going to be a hard sell, I think.
Actually, that's another question I have. Before the vote takes place, I mean, we just went through our own capital project, and it was lengthy conversation with members of our community, and we had presentations showing exactly what the work was going to be and what the costs were associated with that. Will there be an opportunity for us to get some kind of information like that?
Oh, absolutely. We have a full list of organizations in the fall that will be...
All right, okay.
To probably buy ourselves back.
I think the dilemma that Mark has brought forward is the need to vote on the financing piece if, capital I, capital F, it passes in December...
Right.
Before there's very much granular information about the project itself. On the other hand, if voting in July, well, if the board should vote either on July 10th or July 31st to support the intermunicipal agreement, which likely would be the least expensive cost for the school district, if it's passed in December, it's still, and I'm saying this with all due respect, it's still a long haul from July to December.
Yeah.
And the outcome is, at this point in time, a total unknown.
Right.
And maybe partly because there is the information out there for people to say, I think that's a great idea, or this is a terrible idea. And we don't have that information. So we're really only voting on the financing if. And there's a lot of time between July and December for this board to take a position, should they choose to, that, you know what? Now that we've heard all the information, we don't support it. We don't think it saves enough money, or whatever. And again, I'm not trying to be negative about it, because on its face, it seems like it's hard to argue with from the perspective of providing the environment for our kids that we think they should have. But we also know there are other issues that we have to deal with, and the cost is one, and, you know, certainly the tax cap issue, however that gets resolved, may be another factor that would cause the board, not that the board would be voting on the project, but as you're out in the community with your colleagues, either say, I think it's, as a board member in Rhinebeck, I think it's a, it's a good idea, it's worth supporting, or I haven't heard anything yet that would make me as a board member go in the voting booth and vote yes as a private citizen. So that's, I think that's yet to come down. I would hate to lose the opportunity personally to pay less for this if it's successful by not voting. It's kind of a, I mean, we're kind of in an awkward place. I'm not just this board.
Yeah, I fully recognize that.
Any other questions?
Well, I sort of have two questions that dovetail off other questions. One is, can you get districts' historic enrollment numbers for CTI in the alternative high school, and projections for, you know, maybe the next ten years? I realize that it fluctuates from year to year, but you've got to have some sort of track record about students participating.
History, very much. So the projections are, you know, I'll give you a real positive anomaly. We have a district that sent no students to CTIs for two years, and they're sending 25 this whole year. There's no way you could project that. So those are tricky. And to be honest with you, sometimes it gets down to an individual district having an economic consideration, saying, we can't do that. We can't send, you know, as many this year as we did last year.
Then I guess my other question is, when we went through our capital project, we did a lot of PR, we printed a newsletter, we did a number of things to promote our project within this community. Is BOSI's going to manage all of that PR and information? Or are you asking the districts to sell our part of the project to our community?
No. And with BOSI's, you know, hopefully you'll be, once you know what the project is, hopefully you'll be more excited about it. But we are not asking you as important to sell the project.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So before these guys leave, I just want to say, and I don't have a problem saying it publicly, it, right now, it's my inclination to put it on the agenda for your July 10th meeting. And obviously, you can either decide to take a vote, or somebody can table it until July 31st. And if we don't vote on it by July 31st, then I guess we go down as a no on the intermunicipal agreement. That's another, again, I'm anticipating worst case scenarios and not necessarily a likely scenario, but that would be helpful for us to know. What if we aren't able to get a vote?
I'm not sure if they'll give that back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank you. Good luck with talking to all the districts. All right, so. Oh, I don't know, should I say this?
No.
All right, now it's time for a recognition of retiring board of education member, moi.
So we wanted to present you with this handsome plaque. And Whitney stayed up most of the night, hand...
She's the one to get.
She did a dandy job. She's got a great career with, what's that place? All Things Remembered?
Oh, yeah. I remember that.
So I would like to read this. Rhinebeck Board of Education Service Award presented to Deandra Dalberg in appreciation of your five years of service and dedication to the Rhinebeck Central School District. And I know your colleagues joined me in thanking you for what you've done for the board and the community.
Thank you. Oh, my God, thanks. Thank you. Oh, my God, I can hardly reach up in my new office.
Oh, she got a new house. You would have to bring that upstairs.
I just want to say thank you for chiseling it. It's beautiful. And I, you know, thinking about coming to this meeting tonight, it was so full of emotion, really. It's, I actually really love coming to these meetings. I know that sounds so crazy, but remember when I first got on the board, I'd be like, let's have more presentations. It's just like, just wait, just wait, just wait. But I really have never actually stopped loving coming to these meetings, even when we had lots of, like, difficult things to discuss, because I always felt like it was really important what we were doing together here. So I just want to express my tremendous gratitude to all of you, my colleagues, and thank you for all I've learned from you. Certainly, I feel like it's the greatest lesson in, like, democracy, honestly, to experience working together through our different positions with respect and, you know, a kind of shared commitment to educating our young people. Like, it really is a high goal that we set for ourselves, and I think that's what, as long as we keep our eyes on that, we always find our way together, along with our communities. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So I'd like to suggest that we take a very quick break to cut that cape, wig cape back to work, I was just saying.
Okay.
Keep it rolling.
Oh, there's cake, oh, my God.
There's cake, yes. Whitney stayed up all night baking.
Oh, my God, she's chiseling. I feel like I'm retiring.
Or maybe fortunately she had a shepherd stay on the church.
All right, so, yes, let us... All right, so we are ready now for our board committee reports. Let's begin with long range planning.
That was me. This is the longest one I ever do. It's not, actually, because I stole Lori.
It's a brave new world.
It is, it is. I know, I know. I'm not used to taking these kind of notes. We did have our citizens advisory committee meeting last night, so the first part of this is kind of old news. But the meeting went very well last night. Dr. Yeager really was a great facilitator. He knew a lot about the district and the problems that we're facing and what we're looking to accomplish. He broke everybody up into groups, and we all kind of thought about what we loved about the district and, you know, what we wanted to, I don't know, he didn't say improve, he used a different word, which was really, really great. And we were asked to, you know, think about it more and ask what type of information or data we would need to help with our firm. So it was really great. I think everybody was engaged, there's a lot of good questions, and look forward to the next meeting in September. We also met last week and talked about the Aspern Schools districts, so Jericho, Pittsford, Bry, Bronxville, and Rhinebrook. They're all very similar sizes to us, very similar combined wealth ratio, with the exception of Bronxville, which is like double ours. Everybody has a declining enrollment except one, so they're pretty good schools with respect to what we're going through and what they're going through. We looked at some test data across the different school districts. Rhinebeck pretty much fared pretty well throughout all that. Some of the data that we looked at, we weren't sure, you know, how much the opt-out movement really affects where you might be if everybody had taken the test. Region, same thing, we scored pretty well on there. Some of the questions we have is, is some of this data, can it be shared with Marvin, principals, teachers, to see if it can be improved over time? And the new CLS math program, you know, will that changing those grades and CLS have an impact later on in the region's years? Some next steps on there is trying to find some Aspern Schools that might have a smaller enrollment, maybe 900 kids, and maybe they're going through some of the downsizing that we're preparing to go through in the high school. So that's still a work in progress. And then some are same thing, looking at kind of from a budget perspective, maybe there's some individual areas that we can look at, athletics, transportation, plant operations and stuff like that, see if we can look at a more positive way to present the budget and go through the budget process as opposed to increasing the budget and then having to scale it back with cuts. Next meeting is going to be July 6th, where we're going to kind of debrief for the CAC meeting, and then a couple of other meetings in July that we'll have to firm up.
Ready for questions? Questions?
I just want to tag someone that was on that last night, something that is, I don't think it happens too often, but the members of the public that came forward, me and the group, come from all areas, kids at preschool, in all the buildings, graduated a long time ago, like everywhere, so really represented, staff members represented really well, which is, they're a part to get.
Yeah, it is.
And they were all fully engaged.
Yeah, it's great.
It was incredible.
Yeah, it was great.
That two hours just went by like that.
Yeah.
And also, Dr. Yeager, I mean, really, I mean, he managed the...
Yeah, he kept that going for a while.
Great. All right, thank you. Finance?
I can't find the finance.
Where's finance? It says finance here.
I saw it come by my email.
Is there some?
But I'm not finding them in the...
Do it for memory list.
Memory log.
We could revisit the finance next time.
They didn't come in before Friday, did they?
No, they came in, no, they didn't come in.
No, I just...
No, yeah, 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 no, they weren't before Friday.
Yesterday.
So they can just come.
Come. So read them next time.
All right, communications.
That's me. So we met, and we really focused on follow-up to our conversation faculty from our previous meeting about how to improve communications between teachers and parents. And Joe is going to look back through records to see what he could find about the Talk Through Teacher campaign that happened a few years ago.
NADA.
NADA, okay. And so then, we spent the rest of the session discussing strategies to promote positive communication, and we divided it into lists of what parents can do and what... communication, and we divided it into lists of what parents can do and what teachers can do. Should I read through those?
I need to stop.
So, okay. So, basically, the notion that we would produce these, a document, right, that has suggestions of what parents can do and what teachers can do, so that we have some concrete suggestions for both sides. And really focusing on tone, and that remembering, it matters how questions are asked for parents, and it matters how teachers present themselves in their first opportunity to interact with parents, that if each side comes on strong and confrontational or really assertive, it puts the other side on defensive. And so, we focused on ways to shift questions in a more positive direction and shift teachers' presentations in a more positive direction. And then, and including, maybe teachers show their class handout materials for open house night to appear, to check their, check for tone and clarity, make sure that what they're presenting has a positive tone and makes sense and is the information that teachers, parents would be looking for. Also important, if you need to tell, if teachers need to tell the parents something, they need to tell the parents. Don't tell the students and expect them to pass along the message. Then we discussed the possibility of extending into middle and high school, the practice of starting the school year with a form filled out by the parents. This kind of came up because I was thinking about how I fill out forms for my kids' camp attendance and how, I think they're really positive getting a fuller picture of the child that fits well with our focus on social and emotional wellness and whole-child approach. So, this, we do it in elementary school, but we don't do it in the middle and high school. So, this tell us about your child would include best ways to reach the parents, an invitation to share if there have been any major changes in the family, any issues the parents would like the teachers to know. The form would be optional, and the information would go through the building principals and be shared with each of a student's teachers for the year. And that this would open a dialogue that further, that between, it would, there may be things that parents wouldn't necessarily ask, wouldn't necessarily tell teachers, but if there's an invitation to tell them, then they might. And it might really help the teachers understand where the students are. Any questions? Yeah?
I think that's great. How will this be communicated to parents and teachers and staff? Like, is that?
So, we have to work out the details on that. We have to come up with, and, you know, run it by the teachers first.
Sure.
Definitely make sure to get teacher buy-in.
Right, for the parent's side, I think, you know, Facebook campaign would be awesome, maybe, you know, the Board of Ed talks to, you know, School Day, you know, the parent's School Day thing would be another good opportunity to kind of reinforce it.
I think one thing we did the last time, and it was a number of years ago, I don't know exactly, how, what, what just?
Four years.
Yeah. I mean, I think one of the things we did, and those are good ideas, which you just brought up, Steve, but, you know, one of the things is we typically have a board member speak to parents at open house. And I think that time around, we asked the board, the board speakers to bring that up when they address the parents, to just to kind of set the tone that, you know, we value positive communication between and among parents and teachers, and, you know, they're going to be hearing more about it when they come to open house, et cetera. And then, we kind of did a full-court press with the teachers' union, they will need to work with our, with our building administrators, so that there are opportunities, and they also, you know, support that and make sure their teachers know that this is a priority and just kind of, kind of raise the whole level by talking about it. And it worked pretty successfully then, but maybe the kind of thing that every couple of years, we've got to, we've got to jumpstart it because new parents come in out of the school and.
Is there a place in Canvas for personal types of comments and notes about students that could be maybe more automated between parents and teachers?
That's a good question.
Diane.
Yeah, I think what we did before was a board goal, so that's everywhere.
Yeah, exactly.
That's always the question, if it's not a board goal, it's something that we, even comes out of committee or somewhere, where do we put it? How do we make it? Maybe it will be board goal, but, you know, sitting here today.
It seems like a good cyclical board goal, you know, like, after a number of years, we sort of forget about it, and it's time to recommit to, because the means of communication changed, right? Four years ago, I don't think any of us were talking about Facebook operating in quite the same ways that it has more recently. So, thinking about how to message around that in the school year season.
I would like to suggest, though, that slotting this in as a board goal every couple of years shouldn't be necessary. It should really just be something that's in every year, this is how we are going to conduct ourselves, kind of thing, not, you know, it's going to be a board goal, so we have to be nice to each other this year.
Yeah, 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 just for a year.
That doesn't stick. That doesn't really stick.
Rhinebeck, respect.
Only for this stupid.
Other questions or, okay, so, let's move on to audit. You're on tonight, Steve. Yeah, now you know how Laura feels.
Not yet. She's still. So, remember, the control's audit a year or so ago found out that the extra classroom activities needed to be changed, we needed to make some enhancements to it, tighten up that process a little bit more and make it more of an activity that has some business learning component. So, Tom brought some suggestions and workarounds for that. Some of them, some of those things are going to require some policy changes, what to do with leftover funds, financial procedures, how many times they have to meet, we went through whether it should be a monthly thing, but then some of the committees meet much more frequently in certain parts of the year, like yearbook, so we thought maybe just a general number of 10 per year, and however you got that done would be fine, so 10 last days of school, knock them out. I'm just kidding. Exactly. So, policy, we'll have to review those, and there might be some, combining of some policies to make it a little bit easier to process. We also went over the letter of understanding from our external auditor. They're going to be here over the summer, August 13th would be a good week that they're here for the audit committee to sit down with them and get a better sense of what they're going to look at and the timing of the process. We set aside some funds in Gatsby 75 to come to compliance with that new procedure. The cost is going to be a lot less than we anticipated, so we thought about using those funds maybe to hire a consultant to come in and perform an analysis of how we're using monitors and aids in the school, as well as maybe looking at how plant maintenance can be changed after the capital project is completed. Lisa Rosenthal is going to join the Board of Ed, so we need a new community member. So, we thought about maybe Mrs. Lavalley's, if he wants to join, or maybe just, you know, send out another invitation to everybody like we did last term. Our next meeting is going to be the week of August 13th.
Any questions? Okay. Let's move on to personnel.
My shortest minutes ever.
You switched.
So, Joe gave us a brief rundown on the state of negotiations for both Annie and the administrators, and we also talked about now that later on, we're hopefully going to support the MOA with the RTA, that we would get the personnel committee and the negotiating team from the RTA back together for sort of post-mortem. And then, we spent the rest of the time talking about different staffing issues with our retirements and how we're going to change those sorts of structures and how we plan long range for how to absorb retirements and attrition and numbers of kids going through our different Specifically, we spoke about music department and PE K-12, so those conversations will be on the table.
We still have a next to date. Great. So, I think now it is time for us to discuss board goals, review our 2017-18 goals, and talk about development of new goals for 2018-19. Let's begin with.
So, I included in your packets the three district goals from 2017-18. So, if, you know, if you want to reflect on those, this would be a good time and also to start thinking about process. We talked, started talking about it a little bit at our last meeting, and I put some information in your packets about when we might want to get together later this summer, either like a pre-meeting before a regularly scheduled board meeting or a standalone. That's really up to you as to your availability and your comfort level with doing, you know, two tasks back-to-back, splitting them up, and that's, you know, it can work either way depending on. I think the one thing, I would say this for Liz and Jacqueline's benefit as much as anybody else, is that, in my opinion, it's critical that all seven board members be there for that session, and that's, that's not, I mean, obviously, if something comes up, then we reschedule it, but it's not something we want to schedule when somebody else is on vacation. It just, it just doesn't work, there's too much that hinges on that for the year going forward. Everybody should have an active voice in the process. We've done that a lot of different ways over the years. You know, we met here, we, a couple of times, we got a meeting room up at Board College and met there, you know, I think if you do it during the summer when it's relatively quiet around here, it can work here. Some years, we didn't have a meeting to discuss board goals until September or October for a very number of good reasons, but at that point, you kind of like to get off campus and just go someplace where it gets clear. During the summer, there are plenty of places here, and we've been pretty good about doing, about setting board goals during the summer the last couple of years. So, I suggest we try to do that if we can get everybody together in one place. It's more your signaling to me, do we want to come two or three hours before a board meeting and do it then, or do we want a standalone session? So, you have to let me know how you feel about that.
Diane?
One thing I think that's helped in the last few years was people sending messages ahead of time, your email, that sort of, to get people to think and that make us, before we were doing that, our sessions were really long, we were putting together hills, because everyone was just starting to think about it then. So, I think doing that's helpful. And I just, we don't have a board meeting ever on present until August, so if we finally do it that way, we want to potentially do several, because that makes calendar.
If you're all interested in going to Bard, I'm happy to try and find you a nice location.
Probably double the rental cost. I know how that works.
So, do we want to talk about the previous goals?
Sure.
I mean, obviously, some of these goals, we went into this knowing they were going to be multi-year goals. So, I guess one question would be, have we gotten as far along as we had hoped to with the multi-year goals?
I guess we'll start with the first one. We've obviously done a lot, we've done a lot more of that more often than any of the other committees, and we've got a lot of data to take. But when I look at writing it as far as engaging the community and getting feedback, we're obviously just really starting there, so we're maybe a little bit, little bit behind there. But it's, it's a monster task.
I'll piggyback on that. I agree, it is a monster task. I am concerned that for next year, we set out a goal of completing this long-range plan, and I would like to be able to get that accomplished, but we don't even have an outline yet. So, I think we're really going to need to, obviously, this is going to be a goal for 18-19, we're going to need to really put in benchmarks so that we can meet this goal. I think the Citizens Advisory Committee is great, and we've sort of given that a deadline for November, so that we have the community's sort of input by budget time, but I am concerned because we're, we haven't started projecting fiscal assumptions yet, and that was, that was so much important this year's. Work, but who knew how many wrongs we were going to have to turn over.
I also feel like it was a very long runway, you know, like, just getting where, I think it was really in the beginning of, it wasn't until 2018, we were getting kind of into this year, that we were really digging into Forecast 5. So, I think the power of that tool is, we have yet to, you know, begin to understand everything is going to be able to, well, help you to study. So, that was kind of a long time with that, and then also figuring out how to build the community piece, and at least, I mean, I have to say, I felt a lot better about this goal after last night, seeing that really you can bring together very diverse stakeholders in the district and create a format for exchange. So, having a timeline on that is really great, but I agree, the benchmarks are going to be crucial, particularly in terms of how that gets overlaid on the budget process. Some of us talked a little bit about how we can all create a kind of a negativity spiral if we start, we keep thinking we start earlier and earlier and earlier, but what are we starting earlier, and how are we framing what we're doing? And I think there were a lot of lessons learned in terms of how to think about that next Technology integration?
We'll sort that one. I think this is also the year two of a two-year goal. I think Steve Jensen did a great job in a lot of that document that he put together. My main concern is that I still don't have a sense of how the integration K-12 is really done and complete. In the document, it says, it's still a lot of work to be done to access each level. So, that's worrying to me, that it was a two-year plan, that was really the only thing that was left. I think the meat of the project is still to be done. I'm not sure why it wasn't done. I'd like to better understand if it's a personality conflict, if it's a timing conflict, you know, what's the holdup there? And, you know, if it doesn't get to be a goal for next year, how is it, is it going to be done?
And I would just say on this particular goal that an important part of this was making recommendations on how to respond to the gaps in integration and needing skills at each grade level. Those are hard things to quantify, but I think when we, when we put these words in a goal, we need to understand how that's going to be presented. I think we could say the same for the social-emotional goal, the potential ways to address the needs that are surfacing. You know, we've done, again, a lot of work on this particular goal, but it hasn't been synthesized at all yet. So, I think, I think it's important when we're generating our goals that we actually understand, whether they're single-year or multi-year goals, you know, how we're, how we're generating positive work.
And I think, just to play off what you and Steve had just mentioned, like, again, in looking toward our 2018-19 goal development process, I, it's become apparent to me, working through some of these with you over the last couple of years, that benchmarking what the specific outcomes are, so that everybody understands what the product is. I think that's where, where, and again, I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, but I think that's where we're making, we might be missing, hitting the point, is because there's a lack of clarity, it's no one's fault, but, so, exactly what do we want to see or have presented to us by X day or before the end of the year or whatever? So, then, we're all very clear as to what that, you know, what the outcomes are going to be. And again, then it's not a reason to beat ourselves up. And again, then it's not a reason to beat ourselves up. But I think going to another goal development cycle, I think that's a lesson learned for me, anyway. So, hopefully for you as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, to your point, maybe a timetable of what you're going to hit when, right? So, we get a sense of that there's progress throughout. And then maybe instead of just a once-a-mid-year review, we review more frequently. I don't know what the timing of that should be, maybe based on the goals that we set for next year. But I think once mid-year and once at the end of the year is not comfortable, I think for me, anyway. I'd like to have more clarity going forward. So, if there are pitfalls, we can readjust the goal. We can, you know, maybe apply more resources or something to get them back on track. So, I think more communication and, you know, on the boards level, too, to make sure we're all on the same page would be important.
You know, one of the things, you know, after this goal was laid out, I did sit down with Steve Jensen to figure out what we could do in the business office to help. And one of the things you did, and that was to get that memorandum of agreement with BOSI's out a little bit earlier than typically we have. We just got approval today from SED. Typically, we don't see SED approval until August. And then we can't order it till then. So, we should be able to... Because one of his biggest things is getting the equipment in here, getting it integrated into the system before the school year starts. So, I think getting that done a little bit earlier has very, been very helpful. I think a couple of things are, you know, like the Dyke Dark Fiber project was approved. But there's the hang-up there, too. So, there's something like that. And he did get a couple of grants. Tonight, we're approving a nice grant that we'll be able to then go out, get those early enough to have them ready for the start of the school year.
But I think he does an awesome job with getting the classrooms ready, the carts ready. I mean, that is never, I don't even think about that because I just know that he does that.
Oh, it's been a time crunch.
But I understand. But, you know, I think from, you know, to Laura's point, the part about finding what the skill set and gaps are...
Yeah, that's instructional.
Because that's the interviewing, that's time-consuming, that's people management and process. You know, those are things that if you don't schedule them, they don't get done, right? So, that, I think, would certainly have benefited from a more strict approach and timeline throughout the year.
I just want to speak to that third goal because I think there's been a lot of awareness around it more generally, maybe more so than our other two goals amongst families and parents. And as I realized last night at the conversation of the teachers, right, that I feel like there has been a lot of conversation happening in different parts of the district around that goal, which is great. I mean, I think there was wide awareness. But then how we translate awareness, concern, commitment into, right, getting back to these more like measurable outcomes, I think that's a challenge the board is always trying to set for us.
Well, if I can add some things on number three, because I think we did accomplish quite a bit this year. The parent academy had ROF support with overcoming anxiety. We had, the middle school had a bullying victim impact presenter who came in. CDEP is planning for two days next year. I mean, whether it ends up being two-fold for staff development. Today, we presented to the policy committee a wellness policy. And next year, I know the Health and Wellness is planning two parent academies, one for the fall, which will be the National Association for Mental Illness. It's not really the same thing as we've had before. We'll, the one in the spring will be really developed by ourselves with having our colleagues, whether they be social workers, psychologists, will be working some in vain like that for next year. And looking for any suggestions, too, that you may have for topics. There's plenty of them out there, but...
Well, also, that partnership with RSF was huge in terms of bringing people in to the event. I mean, I know that oftentimes it can be hard for that committee and plans parent academies. And then, you know, so much work can go into it. And if not enough parents come, it's very frustrating.
I think we found a nice partnership there that really helps each other out.
Yeah, for number three, you know, just as I was saying, there's been a lot done this year on it. And we've been talking about it, cities and board goal for people. And, you know, I think it will probably come up again. We have our goals. I guess it would be nice if we know, you know, are we doing enough to address the issues that have come up? You know, because we are doing a lot of things. And there's probably things we don't know through different buildings that are happening as well. You know, when we make those goals, you know, is this still going to be goals? Is there more that we need to do?
Well, I would like to think that I could speak to this just based on my experience on the CDEP committee. Our last meeting of the year, the teachers were all very concerned that every staff development day had a social-emotional component. And they're meeting in vertical teams. And they're doing lots of stuff internally. I think when, it would be helpful for the board, in my opinion, if when those things are happening, there's feedback loop, right? So, and I think I said this at the CDEP meeting, you know, how will the CDEP committee know what's come out of those vertical team meetings, those building-level meetings? I think it's sort of the same for me with the Health and Wellness Committee meetings that you guys have monthly or however often you meet. It would be really nice, especially when it's tied, you know, when it has relation to a goal of the board, if we can just, you know, not but minutes that we write for our board committee reports, but, you know, just some, so the Health and Wellness Committee is working on this, and this is why. And, you know, that kind of thing. It doesn't have to be terribly formal. It can be an FYI, maybe, you know. But something so that there is some sort of feedback loop to the rest of us so that we have a better sense of...
Well, in the wellness policy, there is, part of it is an annual report to the board of that.
Okay.
So, in the spring, we do a special education report in the winter. And so, we're looking at building that into the, this coming year because we will, we'll be talking about that at our meeting this afternoon. And that'll be on your agendas for June 10th, July 10th, to do the first reading. And we should be ready to go by the beginning of September. And I think, granted, that won't happen until later in the year when there's something to report. But we'll just, we're building that in vis-à-vis policy. But we can do it more frequently, too. I mean, that's just a minimum report out right now. There's no formal report out. So, that's baked into the policy.
I wonder, see, now I'm making the meetings long because I'm not going to be here.
Oh, sure.
I wonder if there couldn't be just in your agenda a placeholder where you would sort of just say, check in on board goals at every other meeting or whatever it would be. If you, the way we've sort of been long-range planning, we would, for a long time, just print, like, for ourselves as reminders. You could just have your board goals and just check in once a month. And that could just be an opportunity where in a very informal way, you know, Tom would be like, well, this is what the Wellness Committee is doing, or whatever. It's not minutes, as you say. But it could be a way just to jog your mind, like, let's keep connecting our daily, you know, tasks back to our board goals. So, it's sort of up to the new president and the superintendent to think about that as possibly part of the agenda, but...
That's actually a part of 4.4.
4.4? Board goals?
No.
Wait, what's 4.4? Oh, yeah, sorry. Well, shall we move on to that? Are we ready for that?
Well, number one, you got right there.
Does anybody have any other comments on our board goals? Yeah. Annual review of board operational procedure.
So, that's a great idea to just mention. That has to do with, you know, one aspect of board operational procedure. I mean, I will only mention, and you all feel free to disagree with me, and please do if it doesn't reflect your thinking. But most meetings, and I can count maybe three or four out of the year on one hand, that were going pretty long and pretty late. And we've been good about trying to wrap it before 11:00. And I'd say we've been pretty successful. That's something that took years to kind of get to long before most of you, not all of you, Mark was in that. But it took us a while to get to the point where we weren't burning ourselves out here till all hours. But I think there needs to be some economies when you're doing that. And one thing is, you know, not to overload the agenda. Sometimes you don't have a choice. Or if you have a guest speaker who comes in and they chew up 45 minutes of your meeting, well, you know, that's going to happen sometimes. But I would just ask the board to consider going forward that I think the more that we can streamline the reports and discussion part of our agenda, because the action items seem to usually click off pretty well. Just something to think about, that's all. We have, you know, we have lots of material in your board packets, but we don't have to review every word that's in your board packet. That's more to prepare you for the discussion at the table than it is to go on the record with that information. So, just a thought, that's all. You know, and I think we're all happy when we get out of here by around 10:00. And at least I am. I don't feel like I've, you know, ready to rip my hair out. But maybe you guys like late meetings. So, whatever you like, I'll do my best.
Yeah. Diane?
So, I guess on the topic of long meetings and trying to shorten them, I don't know the answer to this. But is it required that the board president create everything that's on that, on the action items? Like, can they be condensed and that? You know, I think sometimes we have like the salaries and coaches, it's like so much. Does that all have to be read?
No. And in most school districts, you will see those in the consent agenda. If it's a hiring of a person for a position, such as a teacher, as a typist, as a cleaner, those definitely need to be read. But the annual type of appointments, most of the times, they're in the consent agenda. And then that's not read. But if you have a question about any one of them, you can pull that separately to talk about it. So, if I take a look at this one, and I just gave you a couple of examples. 6.14, 6.15. Those would be types of things about conditional substitutes, teachers, team leaders.
We don't read those.
No, but you don't even mention them at all. It just goes underneath there. I mean, sometimes when you're sitting there listing the coaches and all their positions and everything, you can actually put that in the consent agenda. And I've seen consent agendas be 20 items.
Oh, wow. So, maybe make the consent agenda more populated.
And then you can just, but when you're hiring somebody, that's, you definitely want to read that. Gifts and donations, you definitely want to read those out. You don't want to put those in consent, you know, those type of things.
Sounds good to me. So, I'm thinking about board resolutions. I'm thinking they have to be read.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
See, in the BOSI's packet, there's some pretty lengthy resolutions coming up if we're going to be voting on financing for the BOSI's project. I don't know how much of that has to be read or not.
I don't think anything has to be read.
Thanks. It could be just...
It's published and it's...
It's published, it's there.
As see attached.
A lot of the boards I've worked with would never read a one-page resolution. And they'd say, "As attached."
So, should we try that for the next couple of meetings and see how it goes?
Yeah, I mean, I will be, but...
A little different than organizational meetings.
Sure, like, you guys go ahead and do that.
Organizational meetings, really have a consent agenda. I'm all over that.
I don't know why it's always been the practice to read it every week.
You know what? It's like a lot of things in lots of organizations because it's always been... You never had consent agenda a couple of years ago. I know.
Especially if you can pull one item out.
Oh, yeah. About Joe's comment about reports and discussions remaining streamlined, right? So that we're not here for every hour, every minute. So, I don't know how you guys feel about if we're doing regular check-ins on goals throughout the year, you know, if it's once a month, that those kinds of things be put in the FYI section, right? And then we have it in our packets. And if somebody has a question about it, it can be brought up in full business or other, or wherever. I mean, does that, does that make some sense? Because then we're getting the updates. It doesn't have to be a lengthy discussion. I don't, but that's sort of tricky because it's open meeting, right? So, we have to be able to have open discussions, so...
Well, it also, you know, it saves you time on the board meeting agenda side of the world. But it also requires somebody to create another document. So, I mean, that's human capital on either end. So, I haven't decided yet whether that's a time saver or actually a work creator for somebody like me.
Or Tom, who is the head of Health and Wellness.
David is. So, you know, let's, it's not like we have to start this by the heat of the earth. Let's start with some of the economies of the agenda. And you'll let me know, yeah, I like the way that works. Yeah, I don't like, can we kind of truncate this? And it will be a, I suggest it be a work in progress. And we'll play with it and see what people's comfort levels are.
So, Mark has a...
Yeah, so, I mean, just for everybody else's benefit because I guess I'm the elder statesman here. I don't want to admit that. So, talking about the consent agenda, we regularly used to put the, like, grants from the PTSL or the RSF or any of those kind of things in the consent agenda. But then we were regularly removing it from the consent agenda so that we could, you know, say a proper thank you to those, you know, people who were donating. So, that's just one example of something where we probably shouldn't put in the consent agenda.
Right. Comment, consent agenda is in there, right?
Diane, were you going to ask that?
Preparing for this, I was looking up, thinking I had to go back to my training manuals or a few things. But one thing that came up to me, and I, it comes up, I feel like every year it comes up, and people are not always clear on it. When voting, you can abstain, but they really suggest that board members should not abstain from votes unless there's either, let's say, you're in conflict of interest or perceived conflict of interest, or you don't have information. So, you shouldn't abstain if you're just, like, if you'd rather vote no, you shouldn't abstain.
Uh, yes. That's good to know.
Something kind of comes up, you're like, yeah, should vote yes or no unless there's, you know, like, I don't know. Like, you vote, you abstain from the minutes if you want at the meeting, if you don't have the information.
Good reminder. Well, I do know that when we went to some development thing last summer, people were alluding to their one-hour meetings. I was like, one-hour meeting?
Once a month?
It's always the consent agenda. I mean, it's crazy. All right, so let's move this agenda. Time for comments. Oh, yes, so sorry.
I just, maybe we can also even set, you know, if it was helpful, having 11:00 as the, like, stop time. What if we mentally move it to 10:30?
Yeah.
And like, recognize that, okay, if there are extenuating circumstances, then we deal. Is that realistic?
Do I hear 10:00?
Well, it's just, it's a matter of more like...
I could do that most of the time.
Keeping an eye on the time and summarizing minutes instead of reading them.
Yeah, that would save a lot of time.
Can you start earlier?
Oh, start earlier. Start at 7:00.
I don't know.
Can people start at 7:00?
That doesn't make the meeting shorter.
Well, you know...[1674.62]
You do 7:00, 10:30 and be really clueless about it.
As a person who's not gonna be here, I still think, like, starting earlier would probably be great.
I don't know, it's just an idea.
Well, what do you guys, you guys stick around or do you go home and come back?
We're here all day.
Sometimes I do, sometimes, you know, he rarely does.
He's my icon.
You stay.
No.
Yeah, so 7:00.
Start at 7:00, you guys.
You want to try 7:00?
What are you now, BOSIS or something?
Well, I suppose if people want to come, you know, I think 7:00 is probably.
7:00 is.
Yeah, can't be a couple of 7:00.
Yeah, let's try 7:00.
These changes.
So, when we, okay, so let me just make sure I'm hearing.
7:00 start time.
Because I'll wait up here in a couple of minutes. So, we just need to make sure that when we have our organization agenda on July 10th, that we change that to 7:00 if that's what we want to do. And, you know, it's not forever. We could, we could go back and we find out that's not working. It'll take, you know, we don't have a lot of people come to our meetings, so I don't think hundreds of people will be shocked when they show up and realize we've already been meeting for a half an hour, but we'll have to put it in the minutes and, you know, we'll have to put it out there.
I think we can push it out on social media.
Like, no, 7:00.
New time, new time.
All right, new review time. Okay, so comments, good news.
Well, we changed it to start time from 7:30 to 7:00.
Yes, 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 Joe Farley, yes, good news.
No, I just wanted to comment on, on the graduation this Saturday. I thought it was really terrific in every way, weather wise, time wise, right to the point, moving along, kid focused, not a lot of extraneous, non-graduate stuff. And I think, and that's been, you know, it's happened over the years. It didn't just happen with the flip of a light switcher, the change of the start time from 7:30 to 7:00. This has been, it's been a transition, but I think it's, it's gotten to a really nice place in a lot of ways, so just want to tell you how much I enjoyed that. That's usually the most nerve wracking day of my year and this one was like, these kids were great.
They were great.
They were a good class, good class.
I, I just, I agree and I really like to commend Ed and the guidance counselors for tightening that up and really making it about the kids and there was just so much joy in this campus. It was really, it was fantastic. Maybe I was just feeling it more.
It's possible.
No, by, no. Cry inside. I also think one of the most beautiful things about the commencement exercises is the way, especially when it's outside, everyone can gather around, like literally people can gather around the edges, you know, not the families who are of course sitting, but you know, people, kids from the past, kids who want to see what it's like, that there's that openness to it, which is, I think, really special. I don't, I don't think I've ever seen a graduation that works quite like that, so it's beautiful.
Oh, two, actually. I'd like to thank our legislators, Ken McHale and Dee Barrett for the bullet aid that we received. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And also, I submitted to Joe the list of the RSF grants for the year, every year the Science Foundation has sent it out and a lot of repeats, which is nice, and some, some really good new grants there too. So, we should continue to think about them as a resource for the district as we move forward.
Thank you for the rule.
Yeah, I noticed nobody signed up for that. I had a.
Okay, how about all business? Any old business?
I don't.
Is it, do we finish our discussion about the companies with our notes? Is our deadline this week?
What's the deadline? I don't think it's this week, but it's, we said we wanted to know from you guys by the end of June because she's got to do a lot of work. I think the actual deadline is somewhere in mid-July, but.
It's July 10.
We didn't want to wait till then and then people are away. So, if you are interested, either contact Whitney with your questions or contact her and say, yeah, we're doing. We also followed through on Mark's suggestion to look into going back and forth every day via train and the, the cost saving is negligible. And I think give us out on some stuff by not being there after hours. So, I, I would suggest we, we stay there. Whitney did the cost review and it's, it's about, it's pretty much, pretty close to the same.
And it saves us a lot.
A lot of schlepping, so.
Jacqueline, did you have a question?
If, if we are potentially going but wouldn't need a hotel, can we let you know later or do we still need to let you know?
I still need to register you for the conference. I don't have to worry about the hotel part, but I do need to register to go.
Right.
There's a deadline for registering for the conference.
Registering for the conference is a little later.
July 16.
Oh, it's still July 16.
Yeah.
I think, you probably know this Whitney, but I think there is maybe an increase in cost if you wait until later to register. Again, I'm not sure exactly how much, but you can almost always get in later, it just costs more. The real crunch is with the hotel rooms because they get closed out like in no time. And even the last couple of times we, we went to the conference in New York City, we wound up, we wound up not being able to stay at one of the Nisba hotels. We had to get another, I mean, it was close by, it was a nice hotel. It wasn't really, much more expensive than what the Nisba hotels were, but you don't get to stay even maybe in the hotel where stuff is going on. So, that, that stuff gets closed out and you wait long enough, you're, you're staying in Brooklyn and taking a subway train over and that's, that's no fun.
Okay, so, seeing as we have no public, we're gonna just move on. Other?
Just in the minutes, it has our next, we're meeting at 10:00. In the calendar, does it at 8:00?
Yeah, it's at 8:00.
Oh, it is at 8:00.
It's at 8:00?
Oh.
Because it doesn't have to be 8:00.
I just wanted to.
Let's see. When you have 10:00.
I don't have it.
You don't have it at all? Were you not for sure?
No, I'm never gonna be able to get into my calendar because my password expired, but I can try.
I have 10:00 also.
Do you have it on the stack?
It's the stack.
Oh, yeah, because you were, you would have been away and so we were, you weren't at that, our last meeting. So, we wanted to give you a little, you know, exhale time in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that was.
I do 10:00, yeah.
10?
Yeah.
So, let's move on to our action items. Is there anyone who wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, may I have motion to approve the consent agenda? Second.
Which will be much longer in future.
Okay, that's unanimous, that motion is approved. May I have motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution, whereas the negotiating teams for the district and the Rhinebeck Teachers Association.
Who's this one?
Oh, sorry, I was so excited to get this one. Okay, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the grant award from the Rhinebeck PTSO submitted by Brenda Palmetier in support of funding for the sixth grade Bronx Zoo field trip in the amount of $1,000 as stipulated.
So moved.
Second. We are grateful to the PTSO for supporting this trip. It sounds like it's going to be wonderful for the sixth graders. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. 6.30, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution, whereas the negotiating teams for the district and the Rhinebeck Teachers Association executed a memorandum of agreement on June 11th, 2018, calling for the creation of a three-year successor collectively negotiated agreement to the one that is set to expire on June 30th, 2020, and whereas legislative approval is required by the Board of Education in order to implement the funding of said agreement. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the board hereby ratifies the memorandum of agreement between the district and Rhinebeck Teachers Association, covering the period from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020, and authorizes the funding of those monies necessary to implement the provisions of the 2017-2019 collectively negotiated agreement. A copy of the memorandum of agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? I certainly have to say we're extremely happy to be able to vote on this agreement. All those in favor? That is.
Extension.
Six in favor and one abstention. Pleasure. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of grade level chairs for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School for the 2018-19 school year, see attached.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional department chairs and advisors for Rhinebeck High School for the 2018-19 school year?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the additional summer 2018 curriculum program and clerical work?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Daria Berry to provide teacher aid services for a total of approximately five hours of teacher aid support for student attending the CLS Before-School Enrichment Program during April and May 2018 in accordance with the 2017-18 ante salary schedule?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the grant award from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation submitted by Sarah Willer in support of funding the RHS ELA Technology Integration in the amount of $36,860.60 as stipulated.
So moved.
Second. We are so grateful for this extremely generous support of technology integration into ELA. Really wonderful to see. All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the request for an additional summer study grant 2018 in accordance with the Rhinebeck Teachers Association agreement?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to change the tenure area granted to Christina Orban on May 23rd, 2017 as speech remedial to the tenure area of education of children with handicapping conditions, education of speech and hearing handicapped children effective September 1st, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of fall coaches for the 2018-19 school year?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? That's six in favor and one abstention. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of the following individuals to the positions in accordance with the RTA salary schedule 2018-19 as follows. David Aristov, Health and Wellness Coordinator. Carol Limpak, Central Treasurer. Stephen Boucher, Athletic Director.
So moved.
Second. All those, oh, any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional summer 2018 service providers for students requiring year-round academic support?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2018-19 school year?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of team leaders and advisors for the Vulcan Middle School for the 2018-19 school year, see attached.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following permanent civil service appointment, Catherine Mostello, typist, effective 7/11/18.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the increase in Lisa Mens's typist position from 10 months to 12 months effective July 1st, 2018 at a salary of step 10, $44,849 in accordance with the 2017-18 ante salary schedule?
So moved.